Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your patience. We were out doing a tour, and I was the last sort of cookie, so to speak, to get there and then second to the last one to get back. So thank you very much for your patience. We really appreciate it. Which one of you is going to call the roll?
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Marl.
Here.
Mayor McGriff.
Present. Would you all please rise if you can and join me in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I would have a complete condition if I called him first, so I can have more time to sign these. I have a favor. So Jedi Master Williams, would you be objectionable if I had you go first? Because I have to sign some certificates for the folks. See, this year I was supposed to walk into the Vader's theme, but that didn't happen, so. So tonight on our agenda, we have a ceremony for If I Were Mayor, and we also have a proclamation, because all of you know what's coming up on May the 4th, I'm assuming. So I will turn this over to Mr. Williams.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the Galactic Commission. My name is Wing Commander Greg, and I am the X-Wing Squadron Leader who patrols Sector OC, the OC system, Sector 606. And I'm very glad to be with you tonight. I am here. I have two missions to complete tonight. So the first is I have been authorized by Admiral Ackbar, General Skywalker, and Princess Leia herself to bestow upon the Galactic Commission the New Republic Medal of Valor. So you each have one at your desks. So this is in recognition of your stalwart support of the rebellion against the Empire and your, every year, your willingness to support the Jedi Library, that it sits at the heart of Sector 606. Now, I do have some more concerning news to report to you. Our long-range scans have detected an uptick in Imperial activity within the OC system converging on Sector 606, the Jedi Library. Our telemetry suggests that the Imperial forces are going to arrive at the Jedi Library on Sunday, May 4th, at 3 o'clock. So we need your assistance in making sure that every resident of the sector turns out to help us defend the Jedi Library against Imperial aggression and make this the best "May the Fourth Be With You" Star Wars Day ever seen in Oregon City. So with that, I will enlist your help, and thank you very much for your support.
All right, I will read the proclamation. So whereas a long time ago in a galaxy far, far away, the heroic rebel alliance won a great victory against the evil Galactic Empire, and whereas the Jedi Knights, once hunted to near extinction by the Sith, were able to restore balance to the Force and bring peace to the galaxy, and whereas the inhabitants of the OC system celebrate the recent rediscovery of the lost planet, I'm not sure how I pronounce this, At-.
At-A'tmun.
At-A'tmun, and welcome its inhabitants to the New Republic. And whereas the Jedi Library in Sector 606 of the OC system is preparing for their annual galactic celebration and welcomes visitors from all surrounding systems to attend, and whereas the Force is an energy field created by all living things, from the scruffiest Nerf herder to the noblest Grand Moff, which surrounds us and binds us to the galaxy together. Now therefore I, Denise C. McGriff, Mayor of the OC system, raise my lightsaber, and I apologize I did not bring it, and do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2025 as Star Wars Day, and encourage all residents of the OC system to make the hyperspace jump to the Jedi Library in Sector 606 on May 4th at 3:00 p.m. to celebrate this momentous occasion. We are one with the Force, and the Force is with us. In witness thereof, I picked up some power converters from the Tachy Station to set my hand this 16th day of April, 2025. So I will be at the library system on the 4th with my lightsaber.
Great. We will look forward to seeing all of you there. We welcome you there.
I don't know if they have lightsabers, but I do.
You know, now that you bring it up, one of the things that we always do for the Jedi Library is we have some master saber craftsmen here in the OC system, up at Saber Forge. We will be raffling off two Saber Forge lightsabers to all attendees at our May the 4th. We will also have some amazing Star Wars Legos from the shipyards, the Alliance shipyard. So we encourage everybody to come and join in the fun.
So for the audience, just so you know, we're an equal opportunity organization, and we will be celebrating Star Trek Day in September, so don't forget to come back. We've had some people approach me last year, so we had a Star Trek Day.
What about Ghostbusters? Just wondering.
Well, Ghostbusters doesn't have anything to do with the Galactic Empire. All right, so next on our agenda, we have our If I Were Mayor contest, and I'd like to call our staff up and the Chair of our Youth Advisory Commission.
Good evening, Mayor McGriff and City Commissioners. My name's Janice Schmidt. I'm the Community Engagement Specialist for the City of Oregon City, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight to be able to explain the If I Were Mayor contest. This is a contest that was held in conjunction and supported by the Oregon Mayors Association. Applications were open to 4th through 12th graders in three different categories. 4th and 5th graders submitted poster submissions. Middle school students submitted essay submissions, and high school students were encouraged to submit multimedia presentations. And this contest was really helped to encourage students to be able to get involved with what a local government looks like. Some of the Youth Advisory Commissioners, well, all of the Youth Advisory Commissioners judged the contest. The contest opened back in December of 2024, and it closed on March 30th. The Youth Advisory Commission judged the contest on March 31st. And I'm very excited to have Mayor McGriff and the Chair of the Youth Advisory, Julian... Gara, I always mess that up. I'm so sorry, Julian. Gara Molina present the awards for... We have three first, second, and third place winners for the poster categories. First place is displayed over here, and I'll make sure to wait for the mayor to announce the names of the winners of the contest. And second place and third place displayed as well. Then we have a first-place contestant winner for the essay and a first-place contestant winner for the multimedia submission.
All right, I'm coming. So I might mention for the audience, so the City of Oregon City is a member of the Oregon Mayors Association. I represent us in that organization. We, this is something that, this is our second year of doing this. I went to my first Oregon Mayors Association conference about two years ago, and I saw this, and I said, "Why are we not doing this?" So we started, and we outreach to almost all the schools. We did not unfortunately receive an invitation from every school, but I'm bound and determined to make it to every school for the next round so that they can participate as well. And we've had overwhelming participation from our friends at Candy Lane Elementary, and I'm just so proud of all of you. And last year, our winner of our poster contest, Brittany, placed second statewide, so that was even more exciting. So our first-place winners will be entered into the statewide contest, and I will be going to the Oregon Mayors Conference, and I know we're going to have another winner, so I'm very excited about that. So I'll be down just a second. I got to get my cheat sheets.
I also want to thank not only the contestant winners who are here tonight, but I know a lot of family and friends came out too. So thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate it, and we're very excited to be able to hand out awards.
So she'll tell me which ones I need to do. How are you? All right, first of all, so we have a certificate for you, and I will, all of you, and I will just read one time. So it says, "Certificate, City of Oregon City, County of Clackamas, State of Oregon, Certificate of Achievement. The following award is given to," and then I'll read the person's name. "On behalf of the city's Youth Advisory Commission, the City of Oregon City proudly presents a certificate of achievement..." the City of Oregon City proudly presents a certificate of achievement to, this certificate recognizes the person as a poster entry winner in the local Oregon City If I Were Mayor Contest." I'd like to call up Marion Wolf. Let's give her a round of applause. Okay, her's over here. So let's go over here. So open up her, um, open up her folder, so we can take a picture with that. Okay.
And as the third-place winner for the poster contest, Marion has been awarded her certificate and also a $25 Visa gift card.
So Marion, would you like to say anything about what inspired you to put the things on here that you did?
Um, well, for my fourth one, which is therapy for kids, um, I know that so many kids in not only my school, but like everywhere suffer from like anxiety, depression, other things like that, and I think it's probably really helpful to have someone that you can talk to. If it's just like a teacher at school or a therapist, um, or a friend, yeah. I think it's important to have someone to talk to.
Thank you so much. Okay, next, next I would like to call up, just shift these around. So I'd like to call up, uh, Paisley Mc, oh, yep, sorry Paisley, you're not up yet. Sorry. You're coming. Sophie Crockett. So, let's see, this is yours. So this is, um, Sophie's, and, um, she says if I was mayor, they would have safe sidewalks, animal shelters, more murals, clean rivers. She's got here peace, community, and love.
And as the second-place winner for the poster contest, Sophie is being awarded her certificate and also another $25 gift card, Visa gift card.
So Sophie, what inspired you?
I think really just like our town and like what could really be like good, because I think it's, Oregon City's pretty awesome, but.
She says Oregon City's pretty awesome and could be more awesome. All right. Thank you so much. Congratulations. All right. And now let's go over to our first-place winner. Now it's Paisley's turn.
Fran.
Oh, Fran, okay. Oh, she did the essay, sorry. I signed all of these and then they are now all mixed up. All right, Frances Ashney, come on up. So Frances is our first-place winner in the poster contest. And just before we get the picture, so citizenship, uh, reducing pollution, uh, If I Were Mayor, citizenship, reducing pollution, community shelter, and kindness. So let's get our picture.
And as the first-place winner in the poster contest, Frances will be receiving a $50 Visa gift card, and her submission has been submitted onto the state level where individuals can win from $200 to $500. Um, first place at the state level, I believe, is 500, second place is 300, and then third place is 200. So we're hoping that, um, Frances will be able to place at the state level as well.
What inspired you? So what inspired you to come up with these four items that you thought if you were the mayor, you would do that?
Um, um, kindness. I think that there should be more kindness in our city because, uh, it makes people happier.
I would, can't disagree with that. Thank you so much. I look forward to seeing your poster at the, uh, OMA Conference, and believe me, I'm gonna do whatever I can to talk to the people who are on the judging committee and say, "Isn't this one great?" Thank you. All right. So this is my essay. So this is the, um, essay portion, and we don't have, we, we have, you said we have a QR code or, no, we have, uh, it's online, so if we could look it up.
Yeah, in the back, there's a QR code. We're able to physically display the posters. Essay and multimedia submissions are a little bit harder. So if you're interested in seeing the submissions, you can scan the QR code to be directed to the city's website where you can see all of the submissions.
All right, so I'd like to call up Paisley McWilliams, who placed first in the essay contest. So come on up.
And as the first-place contest winner in the essay category for the If I Were Mayor Contest, Paisley has received a $75 Visa gift card and will also be submitted, has been submitted to the state level.
So why don't you tell us a little bit about what inspired you on your essay? So hold it up.
Um, probably seeing, most of my topics was from seeing things around the community that I thought could make places better, or make Oregon City better and turn it into paragraphs of what I thought personally.
And so tell us, um, for the public, so you go to.
Tamwata Middle School.
And you are?
A 7th grader.
Thank you so much. And last but not least, um, I'd like to call up Justin Evers. Get to be in the middle.
And as the first-place contestant winner for the multimedia category, Justin's submission will go on to the state level, and Justin was our only submission for a multimedia, um, entry this year. We're hoping to get more high school participation next year, but we had 57 submissions in total. Thirty-five of those were essays, 20, 31 was essays, 25 was posters, and then we had Justin's, um, multimedia.
Focus was off. All right, Justin, why don't you tell us about what inspired you to do the multimedia presentation?
I think that community is an incredibly important aspect of our lives, and it's incredibly important for the mayor to emphasize our community gatherings and our ability to be friends and be community and be good neighbors with each other, which, by the way, great job, May the 4th is a very fun community event. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. So speaking of community events, come by the snow cone booth and you can get me, a snow cone made by me. So something I do every year.
Yeah, so this is our, our second year as the Commission, judging the If I Were Mayor Contest. Uh, I feel like it perfectly encapsulates what we're trying to do at the Youth Advisory Commission, right? Uh, involving the youth with local politics is something that I think we should all strive to do. Uh, sorry, local government, sorry. Uh, but yeah, it's, it's a great experience. Uh, you know, I really enjoyed judging last year, and then this year was great too. So I want to say thank you to everyone who applied. Uh, you know, congratulations to those who've won, uh, our first-place winner. You know, hopefully you do the best that you can. Oh, I want to mention too, we have two Youth Advisory Commission members in the back. We have Miles, who is our Vice Chair, right? Miles Kinney, and then we have, uh, Desi Hansen, who is, uh, an at-large member. So thank you to them for showing up and supporting us.
So just in conclusion, I am just so proud of all the students who took the time to work on this project. It means a lot to all of us on the Commission because we know that the sooner you get to know what's going on with your local government, the better citizen you will be in the future. And I will best definitely take many of your suggestions to heart, uh, in terms of implementing things. I already am really big on community, so I can always improve on that. But we work together as a group, the five of us, and we want to bring community and make sure that everybody gets heard, and we really appreciate the youth participating in this, and it's just great that we have winners from Tamwata, Oregon City High School, and Candy Lane. So I'll look forward to going to your schools again to talk about this in the future. Thank you, everybody. Let's get back to the agenda. All right, next on our agenda, we have, uh, a presentation, uh, Youth Opiate Prevention Grant 2025 Program Update. Chief Davis, would you do the honors, please?
Mayor Commission, uh, good evening. Uh, yes, tonight, uh, we have Anne Hayes and Oregon City Together, uh, here tonight to give an update on the progress and the current status of their grant, which is awarded for the 2425, uh, Youth Opiate Prevention Grant process. Uh, as you are aware, that, uh, you guys awarded Oregon City Together $20,000 on July 9th, 2024, so they're here to give an update. And I'll turn it over to Anne and everyone from Oregon City Together.
Thank you. Now, you can hear me, huh?
Yes, thank you.
Hi there, I'm Anne Hayes with the Oregon City Together Coalition Director, and I have with me Robin Bergeron.
Hi, I'm Robin Bergeron.
And go ahead and tell them what you do.
Uh, I, I work with Anne, but I am the Community Security Resilicator.
Anne, we're actually going to update you on, oh, thank you, um, two grants. Uh, the Youth Opiate, uh, Grant, Prevention Grant, as well as the Metro Enhancement Grant. I figured I would just go ahead and tell you a little bit of an update on both of those. And we also have Brian Shaw over here to my left, uh, almost founding member of our organization. And, um, also brought a bunch of, uh, good stuff we can talk about in just a few minutes. So thank you so much, uh, Mayor McGriff and Commissioners and staff for allowing us this opportunity to just do a little bit of an update and really just say thank you for your support of youth prevention in the city. Um, I was very interested to see that one of the submissions, uh, for the Mayor's Contest included some information about addiction, and so it's certainly something we, um, we strive to prevent, right? Getting that upstream prevention so that we avoid that altogether. So, um, we really are appreciative of your generous grants for both of these programs. And I better put my glasses on so I can see what I'm doing. So, um, the two grants again are the Youth Opiate and the Metro Enhancement Grant. The Youth Opiate Prevention, uh, Grant is, did I just press this here? Ah, look at that. Um, is the one that we use for a youth mental health campaign, and then the Metro Enhancement Grant is the one that we use for the fentanyl and other drugs prevention awareness campaign. So on the mental, the youth mental health campaign, I've laid out some of our campaign, um, elements here, but that program consists of a peer-led prevention awareness campaign, uh, Youth Mental Health Campaign. And we started by using Nigel Wrangham, uh, who's a National Youth Training Leader to, um, work with students. We started out at OXLA, which was our original plan, and we had a little bit of a, um, a hiccup there with attendance. So we pivoted and we started working with the AP Psych students at OCHS. And so Nigel did five sessions with 42 students, and he led them through prevention education, risk and protective factor education, um, individual and universal strategies for creating messaging around youth mental health. And as he, as they went through this process, they decided on a couple of, uh, campaign messages that they felt would be good for themselves and for their peers, and then they narrowed it down to one, which is what we've got some of our campaign materials for today. And by the way, I put one of these in the bathroom to replace last year's, uh, poster. But this year's, um, message from them is resilience isn't born, it's built. And so we wanted, they wanted to go with a, a little bit of a construction theme. And so it just, it shows different, um, building blocks for resilience, flexibility, confidence, problem-solving, self-awareness, social connection, coping skills, and so forth. And so they, um, I may show you their, uh, campaign materials on the next slide. But, uh, we also, as a pro, part of this program is we trained two school counselors on the Evidence-Based Blues Program. Uh, this is similar to what we did last year with this grant, and this is truly a, an evidence-based prevention program. It identifies kids that are teenagers, 14 to 18, um, who are struggling with anxiety or stress or depression, and it gets them into a six, six-week group process where they can learn coping strategies and hopefully prevent them from moving forward and needing a higher level of care. So we, we trained two counselors in that, and they did implement the program at OXLA. Um, and so there's, now that they're trained, they can continue to carry this on no matter, no matter what, because the materials are free to go forward, so they are equipped to move forward with that program. And then of course, excuse me, of course we did a pre-survey, we'll do a post-survey so that we can measure our outcomes as far as our goals. And, um, and then the students, Student Health Survey is also something that we will look at once we get those results, probably in June, to make sure that we, um, met our grant project goals. And so let's move to the next page. I'll show you a little bit about, a little bit of the campaign materials. The kids wanted to, um, create the posters that will go into all of the schools. I just picked these up yesterday, so I'm gonna be delivering those out to schools. We're doing some social media campaigns. We have, they decided they wanted some of those little squishy, uh, stress balls, but they're shaped like bricks since we went with a building theme. Uh, the bracelets here, which has their slogan on it. We also have a billboard that, um, is on there, right there, and it's at 99 E and 12th. And then we also bought a sponsorship brick at Elevate Plaza, um, with their campaign slogan on it. They, uh, were very excited about being able to do that. And then another project that's gonna be coming up is we get, we're getting a big banner and inviting kids to come, uh, write down what they think about resilience and what helps them to be resilient. So that, and then we also do have some upcoming events. I brought some flyers for that that's related to the Youth Mental Health Campaign, and that is, uh, in collaboration with the Children's Center and their Child Abuse Prevention Month and Alliance Charter Academy. We will be there on April 24th hosting Angst, the film, the documentary about anxiety, along with a workshop by Dr. Crystal Collier, where she'll be giving parents and kids actionable tools for helping relieve stress and anxiety. So we'll be doing that on April 24th, and we'd love to have you guys join us for that also. Um, and then we're also gonna carry the mental health theme through to two events at, one at Tamwata and one at Gardner in May. It's, it's an event for incoming 6th graders and outgoing 8th graders. So the kids who are making transitions to different types of schools and, you know, bigger schools and new friends and all of that, which we know that's a time of higher stress. So we will be there as a tabling resource, but we'll also be doing a workshop for parents and kids. Same message is about building resilience and, and what they can do for, um, for skills and support for that. Uh, we also did the locking pill bottles with a QR code to resources so that, um, especially since this is a youth opioid, uh, campaign, we want to make sure that people lock up their medication so that it's not easy to get into. medication so that it's not easy to get into. Okay, moving right along, we're going to talk about the fentanyl campaign, which is our Metro Enhancement Grant, and we're excited that we heard we can actually apply for that again this year. So it also includes a youth-led awareness campaign. We had students from Case, OXLA, and OCHS research and prepare a campaign or awareness information on vaping and fentanyl. And you can see those things on the website. OCSD has a website page for it called Know the Risk. They decided to stick with that campaign slogan from last year, and they really took it upon themselves to elaborate and include vaping this time because it really is something they feel really affects them and their peers. So I was really pleased with that because we did want to try to cover other drugs along with fentanyl for this particular campaign. We started this campaign back in the fall when we did the Halloween poster contest, which I think I've already done a little presentation on that for you guys. When that happened, we had 155 entries for that, and 15 were enlarged and posted in downtown businesses. And with this particular campaign, what we want, and then, oh, gosh, I'm forgetting one of the main things, is the forum, the forum for the community, which will take place right here on May the 6. We will have representatives from law enforcement, thank you for your partnership, law enforcement for this program and the other program, and we'll have Michelle Stroh will be telling Keaton's story, we'll have public health folks here, and we'll also have out front, we're going to have a hidden-in-place mock teen bedroom set up so that parents can learn how paraphernalia is hidden in bedrooms, because it is, and so it'll be a very informative thing for parents. So we'll have that on May the 6, so we'd love to have you guys for that also. And the, you know, the main reason for this grant is to make sure parents and kids know about the dangers and impact of fentanyl and other drugs, and that they actually talk to their kids about it. So those are our goals. And luckily, we did our parent survey, and we have found that we have increased those numbers quite significantly in the last year and actually since we started the program four years ago. So thank you for your partnership for that. And this is just a sampling of, and there's click-throughs here, so I won't do those because I don't think I even know how if I needed to. But the one on the top, if you click that, it takes you to the video that we produced. So we're also having school or doing school assemblies at the two middle schools, and then the high schools opted to take a video resource from us, and then they're delivering that to every student during advisory period. So that's what that is on the top left. And then the other two, if you click through to that, you'll get to the school's website where these research slide deck is hosted that the kids did on the campaign. And we'll also do social media ads for this campaign, and we also have a billboard, which I forgot to put on the thing, but here it is, right here. It's at Mawala and May, by the way, really shows up really well, so I wanted to bring that for everybody to see. And then I know that this is actually just a graphic that I just wanted to say thank you again about helping us to get upstream because I know that, you know, it's one thing to reduce harm or to help people get into treatment, but if we can actually prevent that, you know, keep them from falling in the stream before that, it really helps the community, saves everybody money and time and heartache, honestly. So thank you for your efforts there. And so I'm going to turn this over for about a minute or two to Robin. And that's all I have, but we'd love to take questions if you have any. But as you know, we were granted a substantial grant from SAMSA, the Strategic Prevention Framework Grant, back in October. It's pretty tenuous at the moment. We are moving forward with it as if we have it because we haven't been told anything other than, I mean, we've been sent a couple of court orders, but it seems to be going forward at this point. But, you know, we're not 100% sure about that. So as part of that grant, we hired Robin. She's our Communities That Care facilitator, and that grant specifically for the first couple of years will be to, it's a joint process with Oregon City and Gladstone School Districts to do a new community assessment and really find out where the youth of the community are, what they're struggling with, what they need help with, what resources are already out there, what resources aren't there, where are the gaps? And then we'll take the grant after that and start implementing evidence-based programs. So we've been talking about Communities That Care for a while, but now we're really getting into it and starting the process, so I wanted Robin to tell you a little bit about that.
Hi, again, I'm Robin Bergeron. So, okay, sorry.
Can I get back to this?
Communities That Care, I know that she touched on a lot of what we're doing, but right now we are in the very first phase. There's a few different phases. This one is really, really important. And why I'm here with you guys is to hope to enlist some of you and to be a key leader with our group. Yes, I already know, a meeting with Scott soon. So why we are looking for key leaders is, the very first phase is to get key leaders from the community who have influence over getting people involved in this effort because it's really a community effort. This isn't just, like, all on me, thank goodness. Communities That Care is proven, it's data-driven, it is a long process, and it's really a neat process for me to go through because there's steps, there's milestones and benchmarks that we need to meet in order to move the process along. So I brought some cards for you guys. Hopefully you will take them and consider joining our effort. If you know people who might want to, pass this information along. There's a QR code on the back, there's also my information, and I hope to hear from you guys.
Do we have time for a minute?
So Robin, if you want to give those to Jacob, he will give those to us.
All right. We have a short video, but if you guys want to just watch that on your own time, it talks more about key leaders, or do you have a minute and a half for it?
Well, we have a public hearing tonight.
I figured you had a lot on the agenda, so that's fine. Yeah, so the square on the right is a video. If you click through, it'll give you a lot more information on key leaders, just so you'll have more information and, you know, make a decision from there, so.
Does Mr. Brian Shaw want to say anything?
Yeah. Yeah, probably a lot.
So introduce yourself again.
Sir, if you could please turn the mic on?
Turn the, yeah, it's green. There you go. Yes.
One more time. There you go, thank you.
Okay, well, it's been a while since I've been here, so. Brian Shaw, Oregon City. I just wanted to thank Chief Davis and Tony Conkle for coming up with this opioid grant program for us. As you know, I spent probably the last 10 years trying to get funding from the dispensaries for our organization. I thought that would be a great thing to have prevention monies coming out of those dispensaries, but we never could get there, and these two came up here, has it been a year since we've had that, two years that we had the grant? They came up with, well, let's use the opioid monies for that, which was great, you know? But now I understand due to budgetary concerns and stuff, that money had to be used elsewhere. But I wanted to thank, first of all, those two because people don't realize in the background what goes on here, and there's got to be a little recognition there. So I know that even Commissioner Mitchell and Commissioner Morrow, back in the day, were assisting us and giving us some feedback and stuff on how to approach this, so. But I do want to thank you guys for, prevention doesn't go away, we're still here, you know? So if there's some kind of monies that become available, Tony, we would sure be happy to have that conversation again, so thank you.
Thank you so much, yes. Commissioner Morrow and I sat on the review committee along with department staff in reviewing the applications, and we appreciate your efforts. So thank you very much for coming in and giving us an update. And I want to call on our neighbor, Mr. Ken Basinger, under public comments, so thank you for allowing me to switch things around a little bit. And while you're coming up, Ken, give me a minute. So Rob, you signed up for four and three, but I also see you're on the big list, so item number four is for items that are not currently on the agenda. So Rob, if you have something that's not on the agenda, you're more than welcome to come up to speak, but I think you want to be under number eight. Am I correct? Rob's raising his, thank you, Rob, okay. Thank you, Ken.
I'm Ken Basinger of Oregon City. I want to thank all you folks behind me for coming to hear what I have to say.
We brought them here specially for you.
I sent this letter to the Commissioners a couple of days ago. I hope you've had a chance to read it regarding a growing homeless camp on the bank of the Willamette River adjacent to Willamette Falls. It's been there for about three years, and the lack of code enforcement there is turning it into a magnet. There are now mountains, truckloads of debris in piles along the riverbank, an organic material that's decomposing. It is a stinking, rotting mess. Why there is no enforcement, I've talked with Chief Davis and with the other police officers who've responded out there. The issue seems to focus on ownership of the property where the camp is located. I urge you to take a trip to the reassessor's office and look at the plat maps as I have done because that camp is on property formerly part of the paper mill and now owned by the Confederate tribes. And their cooperation is going to be needed regardless who actually puts in the manpower to clean this mess up, but it has to go. It has to go. It's unsanitary, unsightly, and illegal. And if there's anything I can say about it that'll motivate action, please ask. Does any of the Commissioners have any questions about that?
We don't.
Okay.
Obviously, staff is aware of it, and I don't know whether the Grand Ron have been contacted regarding this, but do you know, Chief Davis?
I don't know if the tribe has been contacted. I know we've been working closely lately with the railroad police regarding.
The Grand Ron Police?
The railroad police.
The railroad police.
Yeah, so I know there's several different things that they're working on, on their property the last couple of days.
But no contact with the Grand Ron?
On this one, I'm not sure that we've contacted the tribe. I know we've been talking to the railroad police about it, so I'll get back to you.
Okay, well, we're going to turn this over to staff. So thank you very much, Ken. All right, so anybody else in the audience that would like to have comment under public comments for an item that is not currently on the agenda? Just want to give one more opportunity. So, okay, all right. Thank you so much. We have the item number seven, which is the consent agenda. We have a personal services agreement with Andre's Landscape LLC for Public Works Street Division Landscaping Maintenance Services.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrow?
Whoever.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, tonight on item number eight, we have one public hearing, and it is an appeal of a proposed 29 lots town home subdivision located at 19918 White Lane. The application is Appeal Number 25-01-GULA24-00033, Subdivision 24-00002. So before I open the public hearing, I would like our city attorney to give some instruction. And the reason I'm asking that is that I'm pretty sure that a lot of people in this room have not probably attended a public hearing, particularly if it's an appeal or a land use application. So we want to make sure that you clearly understand what the parameters we have to operate under, under an appeals. If you just raise your hand if you've not ever testified at a public hearing before. Okay, so we will go over some of the regulations and the rules that we also have to follow. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. A public hearing to consider a land use appeal is scheduled tonight. A staff report has been prepared and has been made available to the public seven days before tonight's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria along with the appeal documents, written comments, and input received through the public notification process. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law in the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on that chart. As an appeal hearing, individuals who will be allowed to testify are those who submitted testimony during staff review of the proceeding below. So that means anyone who submitted comments during the comment period will be allowed to testify. Anyone who did submit written testimony and wishes to speak in this appeal should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the city recorders sitting at the front of the room. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. For the public record, please begin all testimonies stating your name and whether you reside or have a business within the city. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the issues raised in the notice of appeal and is limited to the evidence presented below during the comment period. No new evidence shall be considered on appeal. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, you must identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. Any party who submitted written materials during the proceeding below may submit written materials as part of this review that does not include new evidence while the public record is open. Any qualifying written materials made to city staff during the time period which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to city staff with a request that they be presented to the city commission in order to become part of the record. This includes PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in oral testimony. If the city commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be adjudged appealable to the state land use board of appeals. In addition, state law requires us to announce that the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated response to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Now we will open the public hearing for GLUA24-00033, SUB24-0002. I think the mayor already opened it, but I'm just reiterating, sorry.
I'll do it in a minute.
Before I pass it back to you, I wanted to ask about conflicts of interest. Do you want me to go ahead and do that?
Yes, so we'll go down the line.
Okay, this quasi-judicial review means that the parties have a right to a decision where the decision-makers are unbiased, have no conflicts of interest, and are free of any ex parte contacts or other evidence that was obtained outside the public hearing, such as a site visit. As a result, I'm going to call on you and disclose any conflict of interest, bias, ex parte contacts, or visits to the site. Commissioner Smith? interest, bias, ex parte contacts, or visits to the site. Commissioner Smith?
None. I haven't visited the site or talked to anyone about it.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrow?
Nope.
Commissioner Mitchell?
None, and I did not visit the site.
Mayor McGriff?
I'm familiar with the site. I did visit it a few weeks ago, and I spoke with a resident of an adjacent street regarding the process that we would be using to review the appeal.
Does any person in the audience wish to question any of the commissioners regarding these disclosures? Seeing none, hand it back to you.
Okay. So, I will open the public hearing and call on the staff to give the staff report. Thank you, Ms. Hurd Ravich and Mr. Walter.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Quora Hurd Ravich, the Community Development Director, and Pete Walter, the Planning Manager, and he's going to give the presentation for tonight, and then we'll follow the agenda. Thank you.
One second.
As they say, one moment, please. While you're doing that, we will, we have a number of people here tonight who are very interested in telling us what they have to say, and we're very eager to listen. We have about forty some people here, so we will keep to the strict three-minute timeline, and there is a point to it, Mr. Wiley? No, the timer. So, you should be able to see that if you're at the table, and I will call people up two at a time. If you're a couple and you want to come up together, please, that's okay. That way, you know. We want to make sure we hear everyone. It's very important to us that we have the opportunity to hear all of you and what you have to say. It's very important, and we appreciate the fact that you are here tonight, because it just tells us that you care about your community. So, staff?
Thank you, Mayor McGriff, and good evening, Commissioners. My name is Pete Walter, and I'm the Planning Manager. I also reviewed the subdivision application with the assistance of our Assistant Planner, Melissa Lopez. And this purpose of tonight's meeting is to conduct a public hearing to review an appeal, File Number AP2502. And that is an appeal of the Community Development Director's approval with conditions of a 29-lot subdivision application. Mr. Richter has already outlined the procedure of the public hearing. This evening, the appellant is Mr. Chris Minich, and in response to the public notice that was sent out for the subdivision, Mr. Minich submitted a letter detailing his concerns on February 3, 2025, and he has standing to appeal the decision. This notice of decision was issued March 7, 2025, and Mr. Minich filed his appeal on March 17, 2025. And I will summarize and provide a response to the appeal issues that he outlined in his memorandum, in his letter, sorry. Just want to first outline some of the limitations on the city commission's review. This appeal is on the record, meaning no new evidence may be introduced during the proceeding. Only evidence submitted in the application or during the open comment period may be considered. Participants identifying evidence on appeal should be prepared to identify where this fact was presented, and staff will be prepared to assist the city commission to ensure that no new facts are considered. There are two main limitations: no new evidence may be submitted, and two, only those issues identified in the appeal may be discussed. The city commission's options, which I will outline at the end of my presentation, are: one, to deny the appeal and affirm the Community Development Director's decision, or to deny the appeal and affirm the Community Development Director's decision, approving the applications with conditions modified by the city commission. And if the commission identifies an approval criterion that is not satisfied and is inclined to uphold the appeal, it must continue the proceedings to allow the applicant an opportunity to either modify the proposal or recommend conditions of approval that would allow the application to be approved. A little background on the site. This is a site south of Central Point Road. It is 4.14 acres, and it is located in the southwestern portion of Oregon City, directly adjacent to the city's city limit and urban growth boundary. Approximately 1.2 acres of the site are encumbered by a power, power line easement, which I'll show you on the preliminary plat slide. Adjacent zoning and land use. This is one of the last parcels to be developed in this corner of the city. It is Zoned R10 and is surrounded by R8 zoning, zone subdivisions, most of which were developed between 2013 and 2018, with the exception of the oldest, which is Payson Farms directly to the northwest, which is a planned unit development from 1998. Preliminary plat is illustrated here. The applicant is proposing a 29-lot townhome subdivision, which will include tree removal, the extension of the existing street network, and a stormwater facility. The application involves a subdivision that would comprise of one detached single-family residence, 11 two-unit townhomes, 22 units, and two three-unit townhomes for six units, and includes, as I mentioned, extension of city streets, including water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater facilities. Extension of the street network is planned through the completion of White Lane, Orchard Grove Drive, and Payson Lane through the project site. The extent of the 1.2 acres of the site that is encumbered by the power line easement is indicated on the plat, the diagonal lines shown there. As far as the appeal issues raised, the first item raised by Mr. Minich was in reference to City Code Section 1750-030, which is the administrative section of the City Code and a summary of the city's decision-making process. The appellant has stated that it is implied in this section of code that public comment will be taken seriously. The city did not take into account the comments or ask the developer to change the design meaningfully. In response to that, there is no identification of any particular process that was not followed in this case, and the land use process is still unfolding. There has not been a decision issued at this point. In the appeal, the applicant detailed the following topics of concern: townhouses and the density of those townhouses, schools and traffic, road design, and parking, both on-street and off-street. And I will briefly go through those, those issues. With respect to the applicant's first concern, which is the development of townhouses and the overall density, they stated that the entire neighborhood is currently single-family freestanding homes. To introduce townhouses into the neighborhood at this point would simply bring more traffic and create a density that is not consistent with the current neighborhood. These should be built as single-family homes consistent with the neighborhood. The developer is simply trying to make more money by jamming more density into the neighborhood. In response, a townhouse or townhome is defined in the code as a dwelling unit that is part of a row of two or more attached dwelling unit, where each unit is located on an individual lot and shares at least one common wall with an adjacent dwelling unit. They are a permitted use in the R10 zone as of the passage of the Housing Choices Code amendments pursuant to Ordinance Number 221001. Townhomes are a single-family attached product, not multifamily. Multifamily means five or more units on one lot. Townhomes are not duplexes or triplexes, which means three or four units on one lot. The proposed density of the development is 12.4 dwelling units per acre, which complies with the minimum and maximum density permitted by the R10 zone. The minimum permitted in that zone is 3.5 dwelling units per acre, and the maximum density permitted under state law is 17.4 dwelling units per acre for townhomes. The second group of concerns raised related to schools and traffic. The appellant made the following statement: "That justification around traffic in schools does not match the reality of what we will experience. I have three students in the Oregon City School District, and there is no plan to accommodate more students at John McLaughlin Elementary. Building houses in those lots would be a way to increase the amount of housing in Oregon City and give the school district time to adjust their plans. Adding so many units with more students on average will only put further challenge in our community." In response, there is no adopted approval criteria requiring any consideration of school capacity. We do provide public notice to the school district of the proposal, and they did not provide any comments indicating an issue. The school district does its own capital planning and has enrollment forecast models that consider population growth, migration, and other factors. The school district forecasts are conducted by PSU Population Research Center. The applicant also provided a detailed response to some of the concerns about school capacity during the public comment period. And responding to these comments, they added an analysis of the 2024 to 25 to 2033 to 44 enrollment forecasts for the school district. The assessment indicated that any increase in student population could be accommodated in the school district due to falling enrollment rates. And even if the development proposed single-family detached dwellings at a rate of .42 students per unit, at 29 units, a total of 12.818 additional students might result from the development, well below the number of student enrollment lost over the last five years. Related to that was the concern about traffic counts. The appellant stated that the traffic study is laughable. The number of trips from 29 units is way underestimated. Simply assuming the traffic that would be heading to schools each day already tops the number of trips that they assume in the study. Not sure where they gathered that data, but it is not consistent with what we already see in our neighborhood in the mornings. I think the amount of traffic will be much higher, and a solution for that would be single-family detached homes. So, DKS, the city's traffic engineer, reviewed the submitted traffic study, which was prepared according to the city's adopted transportation analysis guidelines, and they found it an adequate basis to assess the impacts of the proposed development. The trip generations in that analysis show that the proposed development will generate a net increase of 13 trips during the morning peak hour, 15 trips during the evening peak hour, and 194 daily trips. Per the trip generation, townhomes generally generate slightly less traffic than single-family detached homes. City has also included this land in our transportation system plan and planned for a transportation system to include local roads at locations and sizes necessary to serve the density projected for the designated zone district and to create a connected residential block system. The proposed density is within the range prescribed by the R10 zone, and surrounding roads have been sized to accommodate new traffic when it occurs as specified in the TSP and in Oregon City Municipal Code 1612, which is our public improvements requirements. The next issue raised by the appellant was with respect to the road design and extensions. They stated there is no reason to attach Wheeler Farm Road to White Lane. The road already dead-ends at the end of Wheeler Farm, and there would be no reason for anyone from the new development to go down Wheeler Farm Road. It's part of the extension of White and Payson Lanes. That will be the primary exit point for all of these cars. I believe that Wheeler Farm Road should continue to dead-end and not connect to White Lane. The city has, in response, the city has adopted clear and objective minimum street design standards as set forth in the City Code 1612-015, and the applicant's proposal was found to meet the standards. A key requirement of these standards is connectivity, which means that developments shall connect to existing streets and continue those streets through the development where it is practicable to do so. Subsection 030 of 1612 states that the maximum block spacing between streets is 530 feet, and the minimum block spacing between streets is 150 feet, measured between the centerlines. The development has provided that street system in compliance with those block length standards, without which it would not be possible to connect to Wheeler Farm Road.
Is that, is there a map that shows that?
Yes.
Where that's going to connect or propose to be, excuse me, propose to be connected?
Yes. The plat shows the existing street stubs at Payson Lane and White Lane and Wheeler Farm and Orchard Grove Drive.
Oh, okay. It's under the green thing that says you're a screen sharing. Okay.
Yeah.
And so, where does Wheeler Farm Road go?
Let's see.
I mean, when I drove over there, it didn't go anywhere, so.
Are you able to see Wheeler Farm at the kind of bottom of the screen there?
Uh, no, I don't see it. Ah, okay. All right. Well, the thing, the closed captioning was on top of it, sorry. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I think I got, got whole, oriented there. Yeah, that aerial was helpful.
Okay. Next item raised was off-street parking. There were several comments with respect to parking stating, this particular comment stated, "I can't tell from the design, but many townhouses use street parking. The number of cars that are associated with this type of high-density housing will be very different from the rest of the neighborhood. A way to solve for this is with single-family detached homes. This will create driveways as part of the build and allow for more parking. If they stay as townhomes, we will end up with way more traffic than anticipated in this traffic study." So, the city does not require minimum parking for any single-family development, including townhomes. But the development will provide a minimum of two off-street parking spaces, one in the garage and one in the driveway, which will be 20 feet deep. Parking is also going to be available on both sides of all of the public streets, which are 53-foot rideaways with 32-foot of pavement, which accommodates parking on both sides. And the streets will extend underneath the power line where there are no homes, so there will be some available overflow off-street, on-street parking there, although parking is not an approval criterion for a residential land division.
Is BPA going to allow for that to be under the power lines? I thought it pretty much had to stay unimproved.
I don't think they're proposing any improvement. I don't think they're proposing any improvement under the power line.
Well, a road is, or parking underneath it is some sort of an improvement if it's going to be a road.
Yeah, well, the stormwater tract and the road will be underneath the power line even, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was not caught up on my slides there. But in conclusion, after review, staff found the application can meet all of the requirements described in the municipal code by complying with the conditions of approval that are attached to the decision. Approval of a land division shall be granted only upon determination by the city that all applicable requirements of this title, ORS Chapter 92, the applicable zoning designation, any applicable overlay districts, and Oregon City Municipal Code Chapters 1208, 1312, 1548, 1612, 1741, and 1750 of the municipal code are met or can be met with conditions of So just want to reiterate the city commission's options. I also want to state that the application was submitted on December the 2nd, 2024, deemed complete on January the 7th, 2025. The notice of decision was issued on March 7th, 2025, and a 120-day deadline to resolve all appeals, including mailing of the final decision, must occur before May 7th, 2025. If the city commission cannot reach a final decision tonight, including the adoption of findings, a special meeting must be scheduled unless the applicant is willing to extend the 120-day deadline. And this timeframe conforms to the requirements of OCMC 1750, 070, and Oregon Revised Statutes 227, 178. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions of staff? Well, we'll let the hearing proceed. We may have some later. So we will, now here, get that out of the way. As for the, so, so basically, so we have the appellant and the...
And it's the applicant.
Yes.
Will give their presentation.
Okay. All right, are you all ready? Okay, come on up. And you know the drill.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Commissioners and mayor, I'm Glenn Sutherland. I'm a land use consultant with AKS Engineering and Forestry, working with Ryan Park Development on this application. I think we're getting that pulled up right now.
And the timer's going, Jacob.
Probably going to breeze through a lot of this because we, we do agree with staff. We agree with the staff report. We think our application meets all of the applicable criteria and hope that you'll choose option one.
Okay, thank you.
On that list of options there.
Does that closed captioning stuff have to be on the screen? It's kind of distracting.
So I'm joined tonight by Nathan McCarty, the project manager and engineer for the project. Online with us is Todd Mobley. He's our transportation engineer. And in the audience here is Andrew Stamp, the land use attorney for this project. There we go. And I'll speed through this because Pete did a great job explaining where this was and kind of the settings surrounding this property here. The last one in that little corner of the UGB. Thank you. And this is one of the plan sheets I colored to make things a little bit clearer. These are the 29 lots, broken into purple, which is the two-unit townhomes, the two, three-unit townhomes, which are those yellow ones, and the one detached home, which is green. As you can see, they're not long stretches of townhomes. Code allows up to six consecutive homes to be shared, to share walls. These are only three at the most. Those are permitted in this zone. The maximum net density is 17.4 dwelling units an acre. And you heard Pete say that this was 12.9 dwelling units an acre, and that's because the definition for net density doesn't include that power line area, so that easement isn't included in that. When you do include that area, it's only about seven dwelling units an acre, which is only slightly more than Wheeler Farms, which is around five and six units an acre. And again, the smallest lot size is about 2,400 square feet. The minimum lot size for townhomes is about 1,500 square feet. I'll probably breeze through this and let Todd take anything that he wants to add to this topic of traffic. Hey there, Todd.
Yep, here I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Todd, we can.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Sorry, I'm not able to attend in person tonight, but glad I could join virtually here. I did want to talk just a little bit about traffic and some of the issues raised on First of all, trip generation, so I guess to back up a little bit, my firm conducted the traffic impact study, and it was dated February 27th, as well as a follow-up memo, I'm sorry, the, the traffic study is dated November 27th, and we had a follow-up memo dated February 27th to address some of the public comments. So I'll start with trip generation, that the study did use trip rates for single-family detached housing. We know from extensive data that's available that that type of housing does generate fewer trips than detached, single-family. There's exceptions to this, of course, but on average, we know that type of housing does generate fewer trips, as Pete Walter mentioned earlier in the staff report. So Oregon City's code dictates intersection operation. Code 1612033C2 talks about the mobility standards. These are intersection performance standards. Says in this part of the, in this part of the city, intersections have to operate during the peak hours at level service E or better. Our traffic impact study shows the two, and it's study intersections will operate at level service B and C during the peak hours. And also at level service A at White Lane and Central Point Road. So we're well within the level of service standards that are established by the code. And that, that code section is kind of how the city establishes mobility. There, there isn't mention in the city's code about daily traffic volumes on residential streets, which I understand is also a concern. All those code details and how you calculate a level of service at an intersection, all that's pretty esoteric. So I think what makes a lot more sense to a lot more people is just how many cars drive by your house every day. So I think that's why we commonly see concerns just about daily traffic volumes like we do in this case. General guidelines for local residential streets like we have in this neighborhood, it's like 1,000 to 1,200 vehicles per day, commonly. Again, that's not in the code, that's just kind of a common guideline as an upper threshold for, for local residential streets. As we showed in our materials, we expect the daily traffic volume on White Lane, what the project in place would be 510 vehicles per day. So we're well within kind of those guidelines of what we'd expect a residential street to carry in terms of traffic volume. And lastly, just with some discussion about the sensitivity of those numbers, I know the appellant feels like the trip generation is underestimated. Even if we doubled the trip generation, which we know would be much higher than it actually will be, the level of service at those intersections would be unchanged, and we'd still be well below the 1,000 vehicles per day on White Lane. So we're actually well below those guidelines and the codified performance standards in the code. So I just wanted to kind of share that to just show, even if we drastically increase the traffic, we'd still, would be well within those standards.
Great, thank you, Todd. So I'll move on to the next topic, which was parking. As Pete mentioned, there is no parking requirement for this type of housing in municipal code. We do plan on providing two spaces per home, and then, as submitted in our memo, that was, I forget the date, but submitted during the public comment period, there's about 101 spaces. So we actually went through and measured the available curb space, taking into account driveways and, and hydrants and pedestrian crossings and things like that. So there would be space for about three and a half cars per home, just between off-street and on-street parking. And school capacity, that's not an approval criterion, but we did reach out to the school district and were able to get the memo from Flow Analytics that the school uses to do their capital planning. And over the last five years, their enrollment has gone down significantly. So actually, the number of average students per attached home, you get about .16, so 16% of homes have a student in them. For a detached home, that's higher, that's 42%, so .42. So if we take that, and this is based on historic data from Oregon City, so that was obtained between 2013 and 2022. So this subdivision, at those rates, would be expected to have about five students, which is well within the margins of just the number of enrollment decline that's happened in the past few years. But again, that's not a approval standard, but, but just to show that we have done our homework on that particular issue. So I will take the rest of this time, hopefully reserve that for rebuttal, but we hope that you'll deny that appeal and affirm the community development director's decision, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
Gentlemen, any questions? I had one for Todd. He mentioned that the townhomes, and again, we're not approving, or this is not about a town, but anyway, so I was curious, the statement he says, "It generates fewer trips." How, how is that? If you've got three units in a, in a system, and you've got, I don't know how many square feet there, but let's say at a minimum, you've got two people in each one, that's six people, that's possibly six cars, so multiply that. So I don't understand how it's fewer trips.
Well, we know that through a lot of data collection at other sites, that's what the trip generation manual is kind of made up of, lots of trip generation studies at different housing types. I think generally, square footages are smaller than detached, single-family homes. Car ownership's usually a little bit lower, and that can, it can vary by neighborhood. Neighborhood like this might have more car ownership than, say, something in a, in an area, say, closer to downtown. So we recognize all of those things matter. These trip rates are, are really kind of, are, are averages. So we know there's exceptions to that, but generally, our data shows that this, this type of housing does generate fewer trips than a detached, single-family.
Okay, well, the, the reason I was asking is that, you know that we are very constrained by transportation. We don't have bus service really out that way. So I, I, I guess I'm feeling a little skeptical, Todd, that there's going to be fewer trips. There, it's, you're not going to be walking into town, into downtown Oregon City, or walking any, I mean, you'd be walking in your neighborhood, but I can't see people walk, there's no, there's not a store nearby, it's not walkable, and there's no transit. So people are going to drive because that's their only option, and they will have, you know, if you've got two people in a household and they're going in different directions for work, they're, they're going to have two cars. I mean, it's just, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to use, you know, some logical data in my head that I'm thinking, okay, if I was on a transit route, yeah, I could see that, but I don't believe there is a transit route out there. So I, I think, like you said, even if you double the, or triple the amount of trips to account for that, you say it's still under, but again, it's, you know, there's, there's the thing we've been complaining about all the time, about the lack of transit, and people do have to drive because, and you're on the edge. So that's another issue, you know? You're further, maybe they're closer to Canby that way, I don't know.
Yeah, understood, and I don't, I don't disagree with you there. It is, it's not in the location that has a lot of walkable destinations, I agree. But as I mentioned, even if we doubled the trip generation, it would still work, but single-family trip rates are not twice what it, what an attached, single-family trip rate is, so your point's well taken.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Hi, so I had a quick question regarding the off-street parking. So you had mentioned that you were planning on two spaces per, per lot, and I'm just wanting some clarification.
You said per unit.
Per unit, I'm sorry, per unit. Are you planning on two, or are you committing to two? Because those are very, I feel like, different things.
We're working with the applicant right now on home plans, and I believe right now, everything that I've seen is one-car garage, and, and obviously with the garage setbacks, enough space in a driveway for another vehicle.
Okay, but theoretically, that could change.
I suppose, but that's not the plans that...
And we're not approving.
That I've looked at.
I'm just curious, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's mostly curiosity.
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you.
So, so staff, just something real quick, if you can clarify, so what we're looking at is standards for development of a subdivision, and we are not reviewing nor talking about any future development because that's not on the table. So is parking one of the criteria that we have listed in the municipal code for a subdivision?
No, it is not.
Okay, that's what I was remembering. They do have to do a traffic study, as I recall, that's required. So what I think there is, in my mind, some confusion for me is that we have a lot of things that are outside of the criteria for approval of a subdivision. And so the subdivision criteria is very specific and obviously fairly clear and objective. If you do X, Y, and Z with your plat, then this is, the next step is...
That's correct.
Okay.
So, and that's, we tried to point that out, that there, the two items that really are not approval criteria are the parking and the school capacity. But the applicant wanted to address those...
Anyway.
Concerns anyway, so, but they're not reviewed as part of the, of a division of land. This application is really purely dividing land up.
Okay, all right, anything else? All right, we will move on to...
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to the rest of the public hearing. And Mr. Lee, you're going to have to help me out again because I didn't write copious notes about the people that you have online. So you have the appellant online.
There is the gentleman who just spoke from online, and then we had one person online who is in the public comment section.
Okay, and so, okay, all right, got it, all right. So I'm just going to go down the list, and so I've got, what?
Wouldn't the, the appellant go first?
Well, yes, I, that's why I just asked, who was, who's the appellant?
No, no, it was one member... No, no, it was one member who just spoke. We had two people who were online.
Todd is with the applicant.
Todd, who just spoke, and then one member, just an individual who had standing to speak and is registered in public comments.
And that's Mary, right? Okay, so who is the appellant?
Those are the only two people who are online.
The appellant here?
All right, so come on down, please. I didn't know where you were on this list, so there was not a separate list telling me who the applicant was and who the appellant was.
Hey guys, how we doing?
We're great.
We're great. Thank you for giving me, I get five minutes, is that right, 15, what do I get?
Yeah, name and city of residence.
Yeah, okay, Chris Minnick. I live at 19705 Wheeler Farm Road in Oregon City. And I just want to start by thanking Pete and the city for what they've done through this process. I think it's been a, it's been clear to me, at least, that they were serious about receiving feedback. Unfortunately, I don't think they took action based on that feedback. And I think you see, based on the mayor's questions already, that we have a situation where we shouldn't really go through a process if we're not going to change something. And I'm not sitting here before you today to ask for these not to be built. I think we need more housing in Oregon City. I think it makes sense to use that land, somebody owns that land, they want to put houses on it. I think that's fine. But at this point, we have no other option other than to appeal. I don't love being the named appellant, but I have lots of friends behind me that are going to tell you the same stuff that I will. We were just told by a lot of people who don't live in our neighborhood, how many trips are going to happen every day. And it's very clear to me that the traffic study is not even close. I wouldn't even double, I'd probably triple the number of trips that are going to be added. I think he said out of 29 lots, we're going to see 13 trips every morning. I mean, it doesn't even pass the smell test. So I would encourage the commissioners to think about, what do we really want in our community? I appreciate the mayor coming out and seeing the actual lot, seeing what's going on there. The bottom line is, they did an excellent job of going point by point with my, I think it's for undermining everything I wrote. But at the same time, at the same time, this is not actually about what's going on in my letter. What it's about is that we have a community that we live in and we're about to change that community pretty significantly. There's no bus service out there, no bus service at all. So everyone will be driving, okay? I have three kids that play in the street, right where I live. And I did ask for Wheeler Farm Road to not be put through. I understand, I guess, why they would want to put it through, but I don't know why anyone would even drive that way as part of the process. Like, if you understand the streets, there's no reason to drive Wheeler Farm Road as part of that process. So I think, in summary, I won't go through my objections because you heard them all from the city. But I do want to leave you with a couple thoughts. First, if we're going to have a process where we take public feedback, I think it's very important to respond to that public feedback. Not just say, well, the city commission, you know, we have no way of doing anything about this. I think the developer has not really taken any feedback seriously. They want to talk about Oregon City schools, that's fine. But I know my kids go to John McLaughlin and Gardner. It's not like the class size is less than 30. So if you want to tell me it's not full, fine, I don't know what full looks like then. So, I mean, I think those are the key pieces of this to me. And again, I do not think that we shouldn't build something on this land. I actually think we need more houses. Be happy to welcome people into our neighborhood. I just don't want to welcome things that will make the neighborhood fundamentally different than it is right now. And I think that's the key to this decision that's before you today. I know, I love living in Oregon City, I've lived here seven years. I think this is the first time I've been in front of you. But I would just say, this community is so vibrant and we have such a good, good situation going in our neighborhood. This will change what's going on in our neighborhood. And I think you'll hear that from other folks. I just want to wrap by saying one thing. You have a big, big, important job. This is the important, like, I believe in city government. This is why I'm sitting in front of you. It costs $250 to sit in front of you. And I would just say that this is why we have land use laws. So that things don't go in that don't fit the community. We need more housing, let's build houses. Let's not build townhouses on the backs and then try to figure out how to cram them in because there's a utility line, because, I mean, all these decisions are being made because of how tough the land is. And so I'll wrap there and happy to respond to any questions or thoughts, thank you.
Thank you so much. We're good. All right. So you were, on this list, you were number 30, so that's why I couldn't find you right away. That's okay. All right, so I'm going to call up Bree and Michael and Georgia Jean Bags. So, here Bree, okay, the other two people here? Michael and Georgia? Nope? Okay, okay, well, you go for it.
Good evening, and I just wanted to say again, thank you for the opportunity allowing me to speak. I also want to thank Pete for answering all my questions.
Name and city of residence, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Bree Ariola, and I live in Oregon City. I also want to thank Pete for answering all my questions over email, I really appreciate it. I'm just going to go ahead and read what I wrote. "I'm here today because I believe the city's approval of this development fails to meet its legal obligation to meaningfully consider public comment as required under Oregon City Municipal Code 17.50.030. That section requires decision-makers to consider all relevant public testimony and respond accordingly. In reviewing the record, I found multiple examples where this obligation was not met, where public concerns were raised but not acknowledged or addressed. When input is overlooked this way, it raises concerns about whether the outcome was genuinely shaped by public engagement or predetermined in advance. I just want to pause and say that it was not easy for me to get here tonight. I had to arrange two different carpools and a babysitter in order to be here. I also, in the time that I saw the public notice and the end date, basically learned everything I could about planning and city code in order to write a compelling letter. I put the time and effort in, and to feel that those, that message was not listened to or considered is impactful. I'd like to highlight three examples to illustrate this issue. First, several community members raised concerns that the proposed development is incompatible with the low-density, single-family character of our neighborhood as guided by the Oregon City 2040 Comprehensive Plan. That plan is a foundational part of the city's land use framework. And yet, the city's response to this concern did not mention the comprehensive plan at all, neither acknowledging the concern nor explaining how the development aligns with the city's long-term vision for this area. This omission directly undermines a requirement to meaningfully consider public comment and raises doubt about the thoroughness of the review process. Second, residents voiced serious concerns about congestion during wildfire evacuations, especially given the number of new homes proposed and the limited ways in and out of the neighborhood. I'm talking about street design. The city responded by stating that there are no clear and objective standards for evacuation routes, but that answer sidesteps the actual issue. Multiple public comments specifically suggested connecting the proposed extensions of White Lane and Payson Lane to form a loop. This would improve emergency access, reduce traffic bottlenecks, and enhance public safety. Not only is the idea feasible, but it also aligns with the city's own goals to eliminate dead-end streets. And yet, the suggestion wasn't analyzed or even acknowledged in the approval materials. When residents take the time to propose a solution and the city ignores it entirely, it's difficult to believe public input was taken seriously. Third, many community members questioned the adequacy of the traffic impact study, which only evaluated one intersection of White Lane and Central Point. It didn't consider the access on Orchard Grove, which is a route that most of our residents take to reach the high school and the other side of town. So I don't believe the traffic impact study was impactful and the response did not respond to that at all, just said, "We checked the boxes, we did it," and moving on.
I don't think they said that, but thank you. Okay, Ethan, are you here tonight? Thank you.
Mrs. Mayor, I'm upset you didn't take an approach at the last name, that's Derazinsky. Ethan Derazinsky, Oregon City.
I didn't even want to go there. But now you've told me, I've got it.
Mrs. Mayor, commissioners, thank you very much for giving us an opportunity to talk to the community and to the developers. I think Chris has already brought up most of the issues that I mentioned in my comments. I'm the president of the Hazel Creek Farms HOA, which is largely located, about half of our residents are located on Orchard Grove Drive. I took particular issue with the quality of the traffic report or the traffic study, impact study. I was trying to review the study just before this meeting. I couldn't find any sort of confidence intervals or estimates around how accurate the trip generator being used to simulate those nine or 12 additional cars coming into the community or exiting the community. Using a statistic such as average number of cars per single-attached family household can mask a lot of uncertainty. We could be talking about single-family attached townhomes located by a high school, as in the case in Oregon City. And those don't drive probably nearly as much as you would if you have a new community being built on the outskirts there on Orchard Grove Drive. Nor, it's been pointed out, the closest bus stop is Lynn Avenue, several miles away. I would express to the committee, I think we are at least worthy of another traffic study. I would like to look at the developer for possible concessions on additional stop signage. We just had two stop signs added off of Hazel Creek and Orchard Grove Drive. I apologize if I have the cross-speak quite wrong there, but we just had a new impact study done. And I believe that we'll be here again in three years when developments take in place and we find out that these traffic numbers were a poor estimate at best. And we'll be trying to find solutions to the issues that we're causing. So I would urge the commission, please, consider an additional traffic study. Look at the impact on safety, there's a lot of young families who are living off of Orchard Grove Drive. Chris mentioned himself, he has kids that play in the street, it's not uncommon in our area or any other suburbs really in Oregon City. I think, like I said, other points have been stressed by Chris's report. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. I have Adam, is it Hartfield?
Hi, my name's Adam Hartfile. I own property right across the street from where this is all happening. And I'll tell you right now, I'm not a professional, I don't do this every day, so I
We don't either.
I just wanted to address the concern also with the the main intent of the neighborhood that we all bought into is single-family homes. And I believe that is probably why we all purchased homes where we did. And to change that, again, changes the whole aspect of community and everything that the, even the young kids were talking about previously, about, you know, bringing community together rather than dividing and all that. And not being able to kind of pursue that with growing our community and growing the homes that are there and changing the whole dynamic into something that most people probably are not there for. It kind of just challenges the whole dynamic of where we live. And with the traffic impact study and other items that have been brought up previously, I believe that the numbers are low. We have evidence of this from the new development that went in over off of Maple Lake. There's a traffic study done there and we can see drastically that the numbers are off versus what was presented. So I just, I think the intent of the single-family homes need to be consistent with what's going forward. And I just don't think that's being observed. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
So next I have the other Adam, Adam Schultz.
Good evening, my name's Adam Schultz, I'm a resident of the Wheeler Farm Association that is adjacent to this property. I just want to start off by linking the mayor.
Adam, which one?
Wheeler Farms.
Wheeler Farms, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to address you all. I'm here tonight to express my disappointment with the proposed approval of this project. It appears that the planning commission didn't take any comment from the public into consideration as if this was just a formality in process and the decision has already been made. For every, I've been taking notes here of responses from the city and it feels like they're just trying to push this along without taking any regard, like they're just going to do whatever it takes to get it there. We all bought homes for substantial amounts of money in that surrounding neighborhood that we bought under the city's vision of the low density. I don't, you can call them townhomes all you want, it's a play on words, they're multifamily dwellings. The project proposed does not integrate with the surrounding areas. As I already stated, there's nothing but single-family homes up there. Yet the project seems as forcing residents to have their whole living experience turned upside down. Where we're going to have multifamily dwellings right next to us, increasing everything. From traffic to residency to encroachment on HOA-provided community areas that all of them have, that we all pay for, they're going to get utilized and overburdened by the Hazel, whatever the name of this project, Hazel Creek subdivision. And it didn't take into effect anything I want to talk about the traffic impact survey. How can you say with any modicum of accuracy that that is accurate when they took one arbitrary day through the week on two separate, two-hour assessments and say with any accuracy that they're telling you the truth? I don't buy it. So again, we're not asking for the project to go away. We, I agree, the houses need to be built, we need homes. But it needs to be commensurate with what's in the neighborhood existing. To me, the traffic impact survey seems like it's all conjecture and estimates and guessing. And in regards to the school, how that is not a criteria for approval is unbeknownst to me. That's one of the biggest things, we're talking about the future of our children and overwhelming the already burdened school seems a little bit absurd to me. In closing, I'm just opposed to this project as it stands currently. This project, in my opinion, violates the city's own plan. I request you reconsider your stance here and make them, you can approve it but with the modifications to make it single-family dwellings versus the multifamily homes. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Cornell and Pat Omen. He's going to make you come up there all by yourself?
Yes, my husband is homesick.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
Got some serious things going on, but I felt it necessary to be here.
Well, thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
Thank you. I've lived on Payson Lane approximately
So just your name for the record, yeah, sorry.
Oh, excuse me, my name is Pat Omen. I have lived on Payson Lane 23 years and six houses away from this development. I understand that the governor wants as much housing, there's a shortage. But this is abutting agricultural land, you've heard from everyone what's going on. I just want to add that in addition to White Lane, I'm always interested in what's going on down, and I have, I put this in my original letter, what's going on down Central Point, particularly where it meets Partlow. Over the last couple of months, I have seen three fender benders. I don't think they get, I don't think things like that have been noted in the traffic study. And a little bit longer than that, actually, I was on my way to a community meeting and I just about got a head-on collision as someone was coming one way on Central Point, someone came from Partlow and the Central Point came out around to get around the Partlow person. And fortunately, he kept going and stayed out of my way, otherwise we'd have had a head-on. I just want to say that we do realize that housing needs to happen. And we understand and appreciate what the planning commission has done. They've dotted their i's and crossed their t's. Nevertheless, they're asking us to open, quote, "Open our hearts and minds to the prospect of new neighbors and housing types." The idea is that we will sacrifice. I believe that the law is made to serve the citizenry and that the citizenry, we are not made to serve the law. The law is for us. And as, we just beg your indulgence at looking at our issues, and thank you.
Thank you so much. Andrea? And then Rob, you're last. Yay. Yes, I'm going to get to her, yes. She's not, you're not exactly last, Rob, we have somebody online.
Good evening, my name is Andrea Wallace. I am a resident of Payson Farms. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here tonight because I care deeply about the future of our community. I'm here tonight because I care deeply about the future of our community and I want to share my concerns about the proposed 29 lot townhome subdivision. First, the city's process has left many of us feeling unheard. According to Oregon City Municipal Code 17.50.030, public input should be meaningly, meaningfully considered before decisions are made. Yet despite our efforts to share feedback, there's been no visible adjustment to the plan or real engagement with our concerns. This lack of transparency erodes trust and makes us question whether our voices truly matter. Second, no traffic impact study has been conducted for Orchard Grove, a main route connecting us to South McCord and Oregon City. With up to 60 or more additional cars daily, we face increased congestion and real safety risks, especially for children and pedestrians. Without data, how can we be sure this development won't make our streets more dangerous? Third, the plan provides insufficient off-street parking. Overflow parking will inevitably spill onto our streets, compounding congestion and creating new safety hazards for everyone who lives there. I recognize the urgent need for more housing and I support responsible growth, but this proposal's density is out of step with our single family detached home neighborhood and the infrastructure that we have. Wouldn't single family detached homes be a better fit, preserving the character and livability of our community? We're not against growth. We're for thoughtful, responsible growth that welcomes new neighbors while respecting those who already call this place home. Let's work together to build a future that's safe, sustainable, and true to the spirit of our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Evan, do you want to put Mary Farrar on? Mary, you're next.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, city commissioners. My name is Mary Farrar and I'm a resident of Wheeler Farm Road here in Oregon City. And I'm here to express concern about the proposed housing developments that lack adequate parking and will increase traffic on our neighborhoods' roads. The current plans overlook a critical issue. Where will all of the additional vehicles go? And I know that they mentioned that they've accounted for two and a half vehicles per home with a garage included, but I'm sure that many of you in this room use your garage for storage. And so I'm not sure if that's going to be the, the real lived experience with that number. You stated repeatedly, repeatedly, I'm talking to the developers here, you stated repeatedly in your responses to the appeal, that the proposed development meets the minimum parking requirements and standards. And while that may be true from a regulatory standpoint, it also highlights a deeper concern that only the minimum is being considered when it comes to the impact on our neighborhood. Our community deserves more than the bare minimum, especially when it directly affects safety, livability, and the well-being of our families. Without proper parking and with increased traffic, overflow will inevitably spill into nearby neighborhoods like Wheeler Farm Road where I live. This isn't just a possibility, it's a certainty when homes are built without space for the cars that come with them. Currently, Wheeler Farm Road is a quiet residential street where kids play safely, families gather, and neighbors look out for one another. And we're not opposed to welcoming people into that community. As a mom to three young girls, this isn't just my home, it's where my daughters spend hours every single day with other kids playing on the street and in our neighborhood. One of the main reasons, probably the top reason why we chose this community to buy a home in 2021 was because it felt safe and it has been. If these plans move forward without enough parking and better consideration for traffic, our street will be more crowded, less safe, and our children will lose the freedom to play outside without constant worry from myself. And this isn't just about quality of life, it's a health issue. The children on our street will lose safe outdoor spaces and they'll spend more time indoors and on screens. If you have kids, you know this to be true. The CDC has found that teens who spend more than four hours a day on screens have significantly higher rates of anxiety and depression. A recent study led by the faculty at the Yale Department of Psychiatry and the Columbia School of Nursing analyzed screen media activity in over 5,000 youth, and it showed that excessive screen time can alter brain development, leading to increased depression, anxiety, social anxiety, aggression, defiance, and bullying. And over 77% of high school students already spend more than three hours a day on screens, not including schoolwork. And if we take away what little outdoor freedom they have left, we're only fueling this growing crisis. The current plans will drastically change my street, our neighborhood, and your future and your city. Oregon City has a chance to do this right, and I urge you as city leaders to plan more thoughtfully. Consider the lived experience of families like mine, because you have a responsibility, not just to today's residents, but to the generations who will grow up here. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robert Whiting, Oregon City resident, 19431 Orchard Grove Drive. And first, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for being here. I see a couple of proud Oregon City graduates there on the commission, so. I'm here to talk a little bit about the, the school impact. And there was a PSU study that was mentioned in terms of forecasting, looking at the last May 2024 Oregon City School District Budget Update. There is a quote in there that says, whereas many other districts have seen a drop in enrollment, our enrollment numbers have been stable or creeping up quarterly. So I, I would, I would challenge the idea that we have had declining enrollment or that we currently are going to be having declining enrollment. Talking to an elementary school teacher at John McGlaughlin, which I believe is the school that would serve this town and community. One of the teachers there has a, an elementary school class of 28 children. Whether or not that is in compliance with state law, 28 kids in a classroom of elementary school size, in an elementary school class can be very challenging for that teacher. I would hope that there would be a reconsideration in terms of the density that is being put there. I certainly do encourage development and housing for people. However, it doesn't seem that it's particularly congruent with that particular neighborhood. I did hear mentioned that parking is not something that is a consideration here. However, I would say that the lack of parking does bleed over to the idea of traffic, potential traffic problems there, thinking of myself and maybe many others here. Just because we have a one-car garage doesn't mean we are going to park our car in there. Usually it's parked with a number of items, for my home anyway, and I would say that for not just townhomes, for any dwelling. If that's the case, then parking would go to the streets and potentially narrow the, the ability for cars to pass each other. If kids are playing in the street, that there's cars there on, maybe on both sides of the street. So there is concern for that. And Mayor, I do appreciate your comment about there is lack of public transportation there and people that are coming and going. There is no other choice for them in terms of transportation as opposed to what's at Oregon City High School with the homes that are there. So thank you for your time and I appreciate your service.
Thank you. So is there anybody else in the audience that would like, well, if you signed up and you didn't sign in, I think we're kind of done. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, the, yes.
All right. So we are, can't, unfortunately can't speak from the audience. So we are now back to rebuttal?
Correct.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name's Andrew Stamp. I'm a land use attorney at VF Law. For the record, it's 6,000 Meadows, Suite 500, Lake Oswego, Oregon 97035. Interesting discussion today on the appeal. I, I realize it's, what I heard recurrently was the theme that we, that the neighborhood addressed concerns that weren't, what they felt like weren't addressed by staff or by the planning commission. And a lot of that's constrained by state law. I mean, you know, over the last few years, the governor has pushed for increased housing and part of that was to really limit the types of issues that could be brought before the city. And part of that, you heard a lot about clear and objective standards. And one of the things that's really important to note is, is that things like the comp plan are not standards for this development. The standards are clear and objective, they're limited in scope, they're limited on the issues that can be discussed. School capacity, for example, is not a concern to the criteria. Now, it might be a concern for the neighborhood, it might be a concern for school policymakers, but for, for whatever reason, it's not an issue that can influence the decision tonight. And I, and I realize that that's frustrating for a lot of the neighbors. With regards to the traffic studies, there was a lot of criticism of the traffic study. I've reviewed hundreds of traffic studies over 28 years of doing this. They all look more or less the same. And this, this traffic study is almost exactly what I would have expected to see in any, from any engineering firm. Your own city engineer, DKS, the firm, reviewed that and concurred with it. So I think, you know, Todd Mobley, he's a well-respected traffic engineer. I've worked with him for over 20 years. And I believe that everything I saw in the traffic study was consistent with normal practices. But you heard him say tonight, hey, even if we didn't give that slight adjustment for townhomes as opposed to single family, even if we had assumed it was single family homes, even if we had doubled the trip generation, we'd still meet the legal standards that are in your code. You know, you heard Todd talk about level service E being the standard that we have to meet and that with this development, intersections function at B and C, well within the limit. So I, I didn't see anything that would be grounds for denial. Another thing that I thought, a recurring theme tonight was that they were saying that townhomes are not consistent with the neighborhood because our neighborhood is single family homes. The governor and, and the legislature eliminated exclusionary zoning in Oregon a few years ago. You know, that's part of the push to make housing more affordable and to increase density inside the UGB so that we can preserve farmland. And so the, the, the days of the single family neighborhood are over in Oregon. And, you know, that's not my decision to make, it was made by the legislature. And really, those, I think those were the only issues that caught my attention tonight. I do thank the city council for hearing this appeal and I, I thank the people in the audience for a very civil discussion. I thought it was appropriate, unlike some other hearings I've been to over the years. Anything you'd like to add?
No, I think that's a good summary of everything so far. Again, I hope you consider what you heard tonight and choose option one from your, your list there.
Thank you so much. We don't have anybody else?
Is there any fellow?
Uh, no, you're-
No.
No.
Didn't even let them just say those things.
Um, the, let, let's turn it over to the city attorney. There's a process by which, I can't quite read it from here, but it basically has on that list on the door who gets to speak. And I, like I said, Carrie, you can read it better from there than I can, so.
Oh, well, I don't know about that, but I've just done this a few times.
Yes, we all have done this a few times.
The reason why the applicant gets to go last is because they bear the burden of proof, which means they're the ones that have to show that the criteria are satisfied. So Oregon state law says that they get to have the last word. And that's what that rebuttal was.
Can I only get five minutes?
Nope. Yes. The, the way the schedule is, the way it's set up is, the burden of proof is on the applicant. And so, thank you. All right. So being no further testimony, um, is it-
Any questions for staff?
Staff, yes. Questions for staff before we close the public hearing.
I have, I have two questions for staff. I realize that the dotted lines on there where they're showing the buildings, I realize they're not proposing exact buildings tonight, but with the lot sizes and the lot widths, that will be able to meet all of the setback requirements for that zone, for townhouses in that zone?
Yeah, the lot widths and depths are part of the subdivision approval criteria and the townhomes, how they're designed will have to comply with the applicable setbacks of the zone for that.
Okay, but there's enough room to do that?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing regarding street width, those street widths hit our, do they meet our neighborhood street width allowing for parking on both sides of the street?
I believe that is true. We have Josh Wheeler, our engineering manager with us, and you can come up and confirm that from Public Works perspective, if you like.
Yeah, I would, I would like to know that because that, that on-street parking has been brought up several times.
And I believe that's not a criteria. Parking is not a criteria for subdivision approval.
You're right.
Thank you, Josh.
No, we're here? Yep, no problem. Josh Wheeler, Assistant City Engineer, Oregon City Public Works. Commissioners, there's a condition of approval. I just have to find the right one that speaks to the cross-section of the roadway. And they would all be the local road standard with standard landscape strips and sidewalk, parking on both sides.
Which is, which width, Josh?
The width is not stated in the condition, and so I don't know-
It's a, it's a standard, it's a standard 60-foot right away.
But it's the standard section that we're, that we normally do.
Okay. 32-foot of pavement, sidewalk, curb, line yard. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, well, we will close the public hearing and we will have deliberation by the commission. One of the things I wanted to start out with is that I hope that everybody understands we are not approving any building development, period. This is about a subdivision. But the thing that I did want to tell you is that I have been in Oregon City for a while. Some of you know that, some of you don't. But what is interesting is that when I worked for the city, I left in 1996, all the houses where you are now was all farmland and everybody from that area came in and said the exact same things that you are saying right now today. They did not want your development to be built because they felt many, many of the same things. Like I said, I'm having a deja vu right now. I used to go out to Wheeler Farms and pick out a Christmas tree, but Mr. Wheeler made it very clear when he annexed to the city that he was planning on selling at some point in time he was going to develop. Mr. Finsky's property was a hazel net orchard. He also was going to sell. All the other farmers that we dealt with are the homeowners who are out there with their acreages. So all of you guys, I'm just telling you, all the people who live in the Central Point, parish, whatever, came in. And that's why I'm having deja vu because you're saying exact same things that they did. So, you know, we're now at a different point in time in the future and now we have, your development's been built, you guys all bought your houses there, and, you know, we are so lucky to have you as residents of Oregon City because Oregon City is about community. But we are not approving a development. We're not approving townhomes, we're not approving single family dwellings, we're not doing that. The criteria that staff has laid out has to do with the subdivision plat. And my profession for all the years that I worked at the city and beyond that, I'm a land use planner. So what Glenn does is what I did, but I did for the city. So I understand where you are coming from, I understand your concerns, but the only thing we can do as a city commission and a planning commission, we have to go by the criteria that's outlined in the city's code and that's what we have to follow. Evacuation routes are not part of the criteria, all the other things that were brought up. And it's not that we don't feel for you, we understand what you're, what you're talking about. But the real issue is that we have to go by the criteria and the applicant's attorney stated the really hard truth. We have home rule in the city of Oregon City, in the state. We do not have any discretion at all with regard to the new housing laws that were passed. And I'm not trying to pass the buck to the governor because I just came from a forum of four cities and we're all in the same boat. All the cities in the state are in the same boat, unless you live in Gillum County, I don't think they have to comply with that. don't think they have to comply with that. But jurisdictions over 25,000, if I'm correct, Carrie, have to comply with these new state laws. We don't particularly like it, because we would like to do Oregon City development the way Oregon City would like to do it. And so you have put us, you know, we're in a rock and a hard place. We've got the state telling us what to do over here, we've got our community telling us not to do it. The state law says we have to deal with clear and objective standards. And it's not that your concerns have not been met, and I know several people mentioned that the testimony, that their submittals and their comments were not meaningful, but the way the land use laws work in the state, goal one is primary, you have the opportunity to participate in the ongoing process, but it doesn't mean that we get what we want all the time. We have to follow the criteria, we have to use what the standards are in our code, and regardless of whether we like it or not, and again, we are not approving a townhome development, we're not approving single-family dwellings, we're looking at the criteria for a strict subdivision, and it's very defined. You either meet it or you don't. And I know you're shaking your head because you're discouraged, your testimony is meaningful, we just can't really do anything with it because it doesn't apply in the code. That's what we have to go by, that's the law. We could be sued for not following the criteria in our plan and the state laws. I don't think you want that, I don't think you want us to have to arbitrate a case that we know we are going to lose. So I, my heart goes out to, and like I said, all the people that lived on Central Point and all the areas where your houses are now came in and said the same things you're saying right now. Gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
I've got a couple of things. The traffic count numbers from townhouses, I don't think it was made clear, they don't invent those numbers. It's international traffic engineer, that's not exactly the right terminology, but there's a national standards manual that spells out, here's the kind of development, this is how many morning peak traffic it generates, afternoon, evening. And I'll tell you, I was on the planning commission for four years before I got up here. I argued with the city's previous traffic consultant that those numbers aren't right. That gentleman retired, we got a new city traffic consultant.
The ITE manual.
I argued with him that the numbers weren't right. I said, where does it take into account the fact that traffic counts are going to be different in the city of Portland, in a metro area, compared to a rural area like Oregon City, where there's no transit? No consideration for that. We can't apply a degree of difficulty or whatever. They didn't invent those numbers, and I'm not up here to defend them, but I think it is important to know that, right or wrong, those are the only traffic impact numbers that our staff, or us, are allowed to measure against. We can't, we can't have our own set of numbers, and they didn't invent those, they're part of that ITE manual. And I know that's not, again, I know that's not what you want to hear. I don't need to stand up for our staff, but I will a little bit. To say that they didn't listen to your concerns is unfair. They did, and they did respond, but when all of the numbers, like the density, or the traffic counts, or the townhouse format, when all of those things fall in the range of what our code allows, they have no grounds to say you have to make a change, because it complies with the code. Whether you like the code or not, that's another issue. And whether or not you like what the state has done to us, none of us up here like that, I guarantee it. But those are the rules of the road right now, and we as a commission and our staff have to have legal grounds to deny an application or to require changes in an application, not whether we think it's a good idea or not. And unfortunately, over the last few years, with what's happened at the state level, you know, we are, we are building housing at all costs in the state of Oregon right now, which is unfortunate, but it's the way it is.
Adam?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I always hate these meetings, but for the exact reasons that have been communicated, because on the one hand, we are all residents of this community, and we hear and see every single day what has been communicated to us by the people who gave public comment. On the other hand, as has already been communicated, we aren't bound by what we feel or what we would like to see, we are bound by existing law, most of which is required by state law that we have no control over. And so I always have a hard time with these. Just a few things that I want to go over first. The first thing that kind of made my ears perk up was the idea that townhomes generate less traffic, and so I'm glad that you asked about that, because I was trying to imagine a scenario where that would be true. And I guess if you thought of putting denser housing at the center of an urban core, then maybe that could be the case. But this is right at the very edge of the urban growth boundary, far from any of those services that are walkable or accessible for people via transit. And so I have a hard time, because recognizing what Commissioner Mitchell just talked about, the ITE, recognizing that it is a one-size-fits-all standard, and the traffic patterns of a denser development where it's proposed now, proposed now versus if it were proposed along Malala Avenue, I don't think would be the same, though the traffic study would probably say that would be so. I don't have a problem with density, but when we get to expanding toward the remaining developable lands in our city at the edge of the urban growth boundary, it does give me pause for those reasons. I also want to echo the issue of public input and the fact that, again, as residents, these are all things that we see in our neighborhoods as well. And I can't imagine myself being too thrilled if I were in your shoes as well. So I want to get that on the record, that we do truly hear what you're saying. There was, someone had said that they questioned whether our voices are truly heard, and I just want to say that that's exactly how we feel when the state foists upon us mandates about how we can plan our own communities. We have a hard time with that as well, and we try our hardest, but the governor and the legislature have their other goals in mind that lead them to try and take away our rights as local governments to plan our own communities. There was a comment made by the applicant about the traffic studies in rebuttal, that all traffic studies look the same, and it looks like any other traffic study he had seen. And I would agree with that, too, because in my time on the commission, I have never, ever, ever seen a traffic study show a development causing anything to fail. So I do agree with that, and I have a hard time, and I know this is a conversation that we've been slated to have for a while, over the requirements that we can impose on traffic, whether we can even do something like that, whether that's legal. But it just feels like, time and again, when these developments come to us, that it's a foregone conclusion that it's going to meet the muster. And I have a problem with that, even though I understand that there are rigorous standards in place, that, once again, are one-size-fits-all. And then, lastly, I will say, knowing Mr. Wheeler, I kind of had the hunch of what you said there just at the beginning about what the conversations may have been like however many years ago, when the current homes being built were going in. And I can imagine that the people who lived at the edge then did not think that putting a bunch of single-family homes on farmland fit into the character of their neighborhood either.
Nope.
So that's always something that we have to keep in mind, and it's a very slippery-slope argument, even though I feel for it nonetheless. So I just want to leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Smith?
I don't have anything else to say other than what has already been said. This is the worst type of meetings that we ever have, because I agree with almost everything our citizens have said, and yet, we can't do anything about it. I hope at some point we can, you know, as a commission, deal with that in the future, but we don't have a lot of control over it, and it really bothers me as well.
Do you think I'm pushing climate-friendly communities?
What?
Why do you think I argue against climate-friendly communities? For that very reason. Well, welcome to our world. Mr. Wilson?
So, first off, I think I want to just start off by saying thank you. I think what's abundantly clear is that all of you, some at great expense, have come here to advocate for your community. I appreciate you coming, and I appreciate you being part of this process, and I think all of your comments have reaffirmed our feelings about state law superseding home rule and the decisions that we can't make. The second thing I think I want to say is that I can say I'm sorry. I know what it's like to live in a community where new development changes the fundamental nature of that community, and I think that many of the concerns you brought up are valid. Unfortunately, we're prohibited from taking those into consideration. And so removing those items that we're not allowed to consider truthfully, I don't know what we could appeal. And unfortunately, I think the answer is nothing, and I'm going to leave it at that.
Well, I'm going to try to wrap it up, and Commissioner Mitchell served on the planning commission for four years, and I served on the planning commission for eight years, worked for the city in planning for eight years. As I said, I've seen the city expand out to where you are. I have several friends who live on Orchard Grove Drive, so I've been there, but never seen any children playing in the street. It's because I'm always over there when there's schools not in session, so no, I don't see any children playing in the streets. I appreciate everybody coming in, I appreciate the fact that Mike and I both have the same opinion, and Todd, this is nothing against you, but I also questioned even during my professional career, traffic studies. They are the vein of my existence, I've read probably as many as you have. During the time I worked for the city, I approved a lot of those subdivisions that are out there. Didn't do Payson, because I was already gone by then, but all the others. And I never really felt that the ITE manual, incurring with you, Mike, really addressed what I felt were the concerns. And I tried through several different ways, dealing with the professional traffic engineers, they have a group, and I said, why don't we add these types of things? The Oregon Planning Association tried to get some changes to those things. We were not successful. So again, as Commissioner Marl said, it's all relative, we're taking sort of an average of what might happen. I know that this is not what you all want to hear, but again, we don't have a lot of options, we do not have a lot of options, in terms of, you know, if it, the criteria people brought up, well, gee, they didn't meet the requirements for the plat, and listed certain things that didn't get met. I don't think anybody brought that up. I mean, this is not what you do, this is not what you do for your life. This is something that's always in my head, because that's what I did for a living. So I know about what it is that needed to be looked at. And I will say, Mike, there was one development, I won't mention, but back when I was working for the city, the traffic city came back and said that the development would create a level of service F and beyond, and that's about the only one that I recall that ever said, no, you can't build this. And we denied the application at the planning commission level, the city commission affirmed the planning commission, and the applicant had never appealed. And that's why we don't have that particular facility in our town. But we also had a group of people that did a lot of work, and we paid for another traffic study on our own as a community to counter the one that was submitted by the applicant. That's the only time I can recall in my entire career that that's ever happened. So I guess what we're looking for is a motion on this particular application. And I think staff gave us that. So who wants to make it?
Well, I'm not happy to do it, but I will move to deny the appeal and affirm the Community Development Director's March 7, 2025 decision, approving the application with conditions.
I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Marl?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Did you say no, it's going to pass?
Abstain.
So he's abstaining?
Mayor McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And thank you, everyone, for coming in, and I will, I will make this offer, so if you have your neighborhood association, I'd be happy to come in and do a land use 101 for you at some point in time. I did it about five years ago for four or five different neighborhood associations. All right, next item on the agenda. Oh, yes, excuse me, we need to take a slight recess, so we'll be back in quarter till.